This entrance would need to be improved in a way that you're not backing up onto PG Boulevard as they try to enter.
And as we drew this today, when I came back, I commented to our people in my office that that should be longer, and so it would be.
So they're gonna have to-
We still didn't draw it long enough.
Move the building, or whatever you need to do to get the traffic off of the Boulevard.
Right.
Because they kinda whipped through there now thirty-five, forty-five miles an hour, so.
Right. So we would make sure that was appropriately designed. This is conceptual. The building could be moved a little bit. It could be a little smaller, a little bigger. Our goal was to provide a lot of open space, so it's beautiful for the building, of course, but also for the bike trail that meanders through the open space. It's kind of a private-public blend.
Can we also hear from-
Absolutely.
Okay. And tell us your name again, sir. Sorry.
I'm John Dester, in building Garden Grove just north of this.
Leave that up so we can see. Thank you.
I really only found out about this meeting a few hours ago.
Oh.
And I didn't have any input on what this was, so I'm seeing that also for the first time. I want you to know that if this works and we can go in and abandon a road and build more homes, I would just work with staff to figure out which of the products we're building that would lay on this piece right. Not that, but there's a narrow strip besides where the road actually goes through here, and it leaves a strip right there. So I don't think that's drawn exactly right.
Well, actually, when Mr. Dixon, when he came in and we discussed this, I think what the thought was, you were in agreement-
Absolutely.
-to pick up the land, and then therefore that road would actually move and become more of a private road?
Exactly.
Which would be incorporated into that development.
It would be, we'd still need to do it. It would likely be opposite the, Marty, what's that road? Is that 100 South that goes to the west?
100 South.
It'd probably be opposite that as our second entrance to the project. We still need that. But what we would build in that area, not having the road, we were always trying to come up with some use for John Har's narrow piece. We had talked to John about it and had what we thought was a neat idea, but it was kind of prohibited because of not wanting residential to creep south. So we shelved it. This idea is much better because the space of that road, combined with John Har's narrow strip, makes it so that we could really be creative. So I'd just sit down with Ken and Royce and whoever else you want and design something on there. So I'm excited-
Having just seen it, you're also interested in that.
Absolutely. Excited about the potential. Yep.
All right.
But I wanted you to know, it wouldn't necessarily be the buildings that you see there.
Well, we assumed in our discussions that it would be kinda like a re-layout of what you were doing-
Exactly.
-slightly to the north, coming into the south.
That's it. We'd probably have to, I'm taking a deep breath because I'm sitting here saying, we'd probably have to redesign Platte B right now, you know what I mean, and take into consideration what you're considering.
Well, so the purpose of tonight is to kinda get it in front of the council so they can react to it, so you don't spend a lot of time and money architecting something that isn't gonna fly.
Great. Thanks for considering it. It's a neat idea. Glad they're doing it.
Okay. Counsel's questions?
Sorry, Mayor, can I just ask, Reed, we talked a little bit about maybe you having an interest in the city property and that other property. Have you, what do you think?
We do. We haven't made an offer. We haven't started any acquisition on the part that's on the corner yet.
Can you, I'm sorry, you wanna just put that over there so we can see it?
We haven't-
Yeah, just put it up on the chalkboard.
We haven't done that yet, but the more the ideas kinda start coming in and making more sense, the more we might wanna capitalize on those ideas.
Because I talked with our real estate guy, and it sounds like that you guys had talked, and he said, you know, that you had an initial conversation, and so I just wanted to follow up to see if there's still a potential interest on your part. So I think that'd be good if-
There is.
-to see you pursue that.
Any other comments? Ken, did you have one?
Yes. Just wanted to mention, as we met early on with these folks about their proposal, we did have a concern and a discussion regarding the transportation master plan and the roadway that, as you say, property. I think there at least needs to be some recognition to why that was on the transportation master plan and the importance of that roadway, even though I believe Marty spent some time and looked at it, the service levels probably don't make it so necessary to continue it for that reason. However, I think there needs to be a bit of recognition for the east-west connection. As I have worked with MAG and their transportation master planning for the entire northern Utah County area, they're very much into promoting the east-west connection roadways. And our transportation master plan with this roadway would connect us into a roadway in American Fork and thus following the road clear all the way up to Grove Creek Canyon. So that would be a continuous roadway. Here it's about in the middle-
Grove Creek or Battle Creek?
Battle Creek, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes. So by stopping that kind of in the middle here, we have a disconnect, which is probably not extreme in trying to make it around that roadway that's cut off and you can still continue that way. But it's just the idea of planning that, having that east-west connection through a larger area, it's not just this minute area we're looking at. It's affecting a roadway that was planned in a larger area.
Other comments from staff?
Marty, do you wanna speak to the conversations you've had? I'd love to hear your perspective.
Um, so based on what Ken was saying, I fully agree that there is value to the road. It's currently classified as a collector's street in our transportation master plan. It was put there for a reason, but it's more, if you look at the vicinity, people coming from Battle Creek, coming down, they probably have a destination. If they're going to American Fork, they probably, even though it does provide another way to get there, it's probably not going to be the ideal way to get there, which would be State Street. If you're going to the interchange, you're gonna be taking Pleasant Grove Boulevard. Yes, it does create that interconnectability, but, so I guess it would have to be something that the council would say, this is worth losing that interconnectability for. However, based on the transportation, looking at the models, we don't significantly decrease our level of service on Pleasant Grove Boulevard or 13th West by creating that additional demand that would be, so people coming down 220 South to Pleasant Grove Boulevard, if they wanted to continue west on First South, would then turn down Pleasant Grove Boulevard, turn back up on 13th West, and then make that transition. Again, there's probably very few people that want to make that, but it does discontinue that potential, or it makes it so they have to kinda go around. It does not increase significantly in the transportation models, the traffic volumes on Pleasant Grove Boulevard or 13th West that would say, don't do that because you have to have the road through there, else you've really decreased the level of service on those roads. It does slightly increase it, but it's not to a level, I guess, it's concerning at all. And so I guess it's more a level of council as far as utility connections, things of that nature. I think all of those can be addressed. We have adequate fire service in the area. We have adequate storm drainage in the area. There are some current things happening with Cambria that come down through the development, but that can happen on a private level with private easements for their sewer and storm drain that come down through the property. So it's more a level of, do we wanna give up something that would create some interconnectability? It would have to, you know, if it's a great plan, if it's something that you see as a plan, it may be worth it to do that. It's not gonna create a big issue with transportation based on all of the modeling.
Is the council clear what road? I think the mayor pointed it out, but do we need to kinda show that this is where the master plan road is again to-
It might be helpful.
If somebody can hit number five on the white pointer there, I'll just pull it up here.
Number five?
Yep, hit number five.
Yep.
That's the one.
While we're doing that, Mayor, I just wanted to add, from a planning-
Perspective.
Yeah, you have the one Tina had last time.
Okay. All right. From a planning perspective, we have to look at it in different ways. So yes, I brought up the concern about the interconnecting roadway, but I think what we also look at with planning is more economic development oriented, or what's a good plan for that area. And because of the diagonal nature of Pleasant Grove Boulevard coming through those properties, it has created some difficulties in creating a good development plan. So I think that we do need to recognize that there might be best ways of developing this land, which may or may not include a master plan roadway.
So in this case, there's a corresponding trade-off that you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
So kinda just looking the overall vicinity, what kinda the interconnectability. So this is First South here, and it will connect to North County Boulevard here, and then the road is planned to go all the way to Fifth East in American Fork at some point. Obviously, there's a lot of development that needs to occur for that to happen, but the interconnectability, you know, all of 220 South comes down to this point here by Curtis Miners Building. Right now, that's a planned intersection for a signal.
There you go.
Right there. There's a planned signal here at this intersection. Making this a T-intersection would not necessarily negate that need. We would still probably have a signal at this location at some point, and that's what you're talking about, of needing to integrate that into an overall site plan. But this is the section of the road that we're talking about potentially being removed from the transportation master plan. And right now, just so you're aware, as John Dester was mentioning, Platte B has already been approved. The road has already, I don't know if we've recorded that plat yet, John?
It's not recorded.
But it's, so- You know, you gave the roadway with Platte A, so we already own part of that right-of-way, but at the same time, it would be vacated back to-
That could be reversed.
Yeah. It would be vacated back to the original owner and-
So the concept here, counsel, the reason we even asked the developers to bring this forward is, if this road continues this way, and we know you've seen this before, because when John Har came in, this was the discussion, whether or not there would be a narrow strip of very small residential on the south side of a through street. But if it came through, the real concern here is you're splitting this piece here, making this part more difficult to develop, and then this part more difficult. By ending it here and allowing for, you know, ingress and egress here, you're able to put in a larger commercial use, and also they master-planned in this area here and expressed interest in being the developers for that as well. So that's where the thought came in. Float it by the councils, see what the council says before you spend any more time and money on this. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, thank you. That's our proposal. We think it'll work well.
Okay. Counsel, do you wanna give any feedback so that Reed knows where you're at and whether they should continue this or walk away?
I'll give mine. It is difficult, because when you do, we talk about splitting that with the road, it is difficult then to turn around and try and expect some development in there. It's just hard. It's smaller.
Yeah.
And so I'm in favor of Reed taking the next steps.
Taking another look at it. You're okay with that. Ben?
Excuse me, I'm comfortable with the proposal.
I'm gonna speak in your mic, sorry.
Comfortable with the proposal, although it does sound like staff may have some division of opinion on the real value of that road. I don't know if there's an objective way for us to quantify when those roads, I mean, you talked about how it wouldn't appreciably affect service, but it would have some effect, I assume, on service levels. If there's a way to quantify that more, I would be in favor of getting more data.
Was that the impression you were trying to give us? Marty?
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely, well, again, it's not gonna create a traffic jam. It's not gonna create a significant decrease in our level of service on our existing streets. So it's really hard to quantify, I guess, that this is causing a significant impact by removing this. There may be some time delays. There may be, you know, somebody that really wants to get through that area is gonna just have to choose a different route that would be fully acceptable and get in there as well. So again, if it's removed, I don't think it's gonna affect the overall area, transportation flows, things of that nature. But there is some value to having roads through areas.
Absolutely.
This is just, you know, it's kind of a small piece. It does bisect that property and creates some issues with that. So it's kind of unique in that way.
Ken, did you have a comment?
Nothing further. You know, like I say, from a planning standpoint, we look at it in two different ways, and one is in favor of keeping the road, and one is in favor of removing the road.
Okay. Scott, did you pick up your microphone?
Yeah, I was just gonna kinda reiterate. Obviously, it's hard for our staff to say, let's absolutely get rid of this road, but we also understand the economic development implications and getting quality development, and that's the trade-off, so.
If you want your steakhouse, then eat it too.
Well, and so the question, I guess, really is, does staff have a recommendation one way or the other?
Not solid.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's why we're in front of you, is to see where you're at.
If they were to come back with an actual site plan and a proposal, I think that's when, that's when we'd have that kind of information. You'd be able to look at it and go, oh, this is what I'm trading for this.
Can I add? And Reed, is the housing a deal breaker? If the housing's not allowed, does that stop your project at that point?
It's all pretty integral. The seller has insisted on selling the overall parcel, not just the good part. He wants to sell all of it, so that he's not left with an odd-shaped, you know, bad apple.
So you also-
We're obligated to acquire the whole thing, and it makes it difficult to make this project work at all if that, if that narrow, you know, small piece is not efficiently used, or not used at all and waits for a long time.
So you'll also want from the council a feeling on that housing aspect?
Well, we're hoping that, you know, the way we had it was, a road would be right next to a residential area, whereas now we have a small perpetuation of the residential project that's already there, and then we would have a wall, a fence or a wall between those units and the rest of the commercial. So we think it's very compatible.
Yeah, and I understand, I just wanted to make the council understand that this would be a rezone at this point, and we've had a, you know, John came in and asked for that. The council said no. Council has every right to, you know, change their mind or consider this project as a whole, but I wanted to make sure you left here knowing where the council is with the housing and with the road.
How many units was the housing?
What we should-
What would you anticipate the units per acre to be on that?
Not really very high, because as I looked at it this afternoon before coming, by not having a road there, taking John's little piece, we could actually probably put some more of our cottage, we call them garden homes, remember the ones that are in the middle? It looks to me like there's enough room to do that, to like mirror some more of those. Almost have a third set of those. If I have two sets, we might be able to do three. And so what I'd like to see what fits in here is some more of those and another building or two of townhouses. Those have proved really popular. We just don't have enough of those. So that combination, to answer your question, it's probably, I would say seven, seven or eight.
Seven acres?
Six to seven.
And some of them are small, smallages, so.
Yeah, the development currently, John Dester's development currently is about a little over eight units per acre total.
The idea would be it wouldn't exceed what he's already doing.
Any comments on this side?
Yeah.
You're all right? Oh, so you already told them what you wanted. Okay, great. That's what we'd like to hear. Sorry.
Can we phrase this more like willing to consider, rather than I'm okay with-
So what we're hearing is-
Very willing to consider.
We will entertain it.
What we're hearing is the council is very willing to consider this proposal that you've shown, you know, as long as when you come back, the Ts and Cs are still looking the same. If it's not changing dramatically, you're looking at picking up that corner parcel and developing and working with the housing development. We'd consider it. Do have to take care of that off, the ingress, egress, though, off of the Boulevard. Okay? Good?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, 10A or 10B? All right. This is to consider for adoption a resolution 2016, yes? Did I miss something?
I don't think this will take very long.
2016-045, authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal cooperative agreement between Pleasant Grove City and Utah County regarding Canyon Road 100 East and providing for an effective date.
So a couple of weeks ago, we had an in-depth discussion on future improvements on 100 East. At that time, it was a three-way agreement between Pleasant Grove City, Cedar Hills, and Utah County. What was on the table and the gist of the agreement was that there is some grant money that is available to improve 100 East, above and beyond what the county has told us that they would do. So the county has recently obtained this road. They've told us that they wanna maintain it at a county-level road, which is different than a city-standard road. We applied for some grant money a couple of years ago. The grant money is on the table, but the county has said, if we're gonna use the grant money for this project, then we are asking the city to take the road in 30 years. So that's the big thing that's on the table. The same offer with Cedar Hills, Cedar Hills rejected that offer two weeks ago. We asked the county if they would still entertain it, if it was just Pleasant Grove and our portion of the road that was, received the improvements through the grant money, and they have said they will do that. So on our portion of the road, if we agree to this agreement, we would receive a portion of the grant money. The improvements would be put in. The Cedar Hills portion would just get a mill and fill, which is a standard way that the county would maintain their road. And then at the end of 30 years, we would obtain ownership of this road. We have, there's a couple elements of the agreement. We agree to take care of some of the smaller maintenance, potholes, some striping, things of that nature. They would take care of the surface treatments and any overlays or anything that needs to be done up to the next 30 years. There is a requirement that they, when the 30 years hits, that there's a certain level of quality that, shape that the road needs to be in, and we've deemed that a 70 PCI. PCI is the pavement condition index. That 70 is, I think, considered very good on the standards of a street, so that we know that at the end of 30 years, they're just not gonna give us the broken-down road that needs a lot of maintenance. It will be a pretty good road, a very good road at that point. So we have worked that out with the county that we would enter into this agreement. There's two things that we've added to the agreement from when we had this discussion two weeks ago. Three things, I guess. Two of them are along the lines of the grant money. So the grant money right now is given by MAG, and MAG is the one, the Mountain Land Association of Governments. They're the ones that determine, if we're gonna go back and say, okay, we need to modify this grant, they will be the ones that ultimately determine how much money we will get just for the Pleasant Grove portion. So we don't know that number today. So the agreement states that the county and the city will work together to figure out how much grant money will be awarded to this project. The agreement also states that if we, as a city, don't feel we're getting enough grant money to make the project worthwhile, we have the ability to back out. We can cancel it. At that point, the county would just do the mill and fill all the way along First East and move forward on that part of the project. We're assuming that the MAG will work with us, that we will get the sufficient amount of grant money to get the improvements, which are safety, storm drain. And this is gonna be, certain parts of the road where there needs to be a little bit of reconstruction, we're getting a nice quality road above and beyond what a mill and fill would do. The last item is the snow removal aspect. Now, part of our agreement with them is that we will take care of the snow removal on our dime for the Pleasant Grove portion. Now that Cedar Hills is no longer party to it, they have a segment, the Cedar Hills portion, that needs to be maintained, and they have asked if we could contract, if they could contract with us, so we would just end up plowing the whole road, and then they would pay us for the portion, for the Cedar Hills portion, so that we come out whole on that. Because it is a county road, it's not gonna be Cedar Hills Road. So the county would say, all right, we'll pay you X amount of dollars per pass, and we'll get that worked out. That's not in this agreement, but it does state we will work on a separate agreement that will outline the particular snow removal. So that's what's on the table right now, and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer.
Do we currently have the snowpile equipment that's able to handle that, or would we have to make a purchase for that?
I believe we can handle it. Marty?
We, our new truck that we just bought last year is fully equipped and would be the one that we would use for that, for sure. And it's, yeah, it's fully capable of maintaining that road.
So we have all the equipment needed to maintain our portion of what will be required at this time?
Yes.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, so we came to conclusions, what, 3.7 miles that we have of First East?
Yeah, I think total was 5.5, and I think we had about 60%, so I think it's about 3.7.
And correct me if I'm wrong, it's a little over a million dollars, right, to do the full reconstruct-ish?
A million dollars?
Yeah.
So-
Per mile.
Oh, sorry. A full reconstruct generally is about 1.2 million per mile.
I was getting there.
Cause I was gonna say, nah.
And understand, Eric, that that's just, that's a typical road section reconstruct. So a typical road section to me is a local road, 40 feet wide, three inches of asphalt on eight inches of base. So this is a different section than that. You're talking 12 inches of base, six inches of asphalt, 50 feet wide, so you can't really compare numbers when you're talking about 1.2 million per mile.
You know where I'm going. I just wanna make sure this 9.3 is gonna be sufficient, right?
Right.
And I know we have to share some of that to Cedar, if they do that.
No, we're not. So that's the deal, is there's 5.5 million dollars of grant money. We're not gonna get all that now, because part of that was to go for Cedar Hills improvements. We're trying to figure out how much of the 5.5 we are now gonna get in order to meet the improvements for our section of road. And that's why we have an out in the agreement. If Matt comes back and says, okay, you only get a million bucks of the grant money, that's not gonna be enough to get the improvements we need, so we're not gonna wanna take the road at that point.
So when will we know about the grant money?
I think they'll make a decision very fast, soon as we make a decision whether or not we're gonna move forward with this contract. Cause the county's not gonna accept any money if there is no, there are no agreements. They've just said, we're gonna pass on the money, we're gonna do the mill and fill. So MAG really doesn't have a decision to make right now. If they say we've gotta, we need to reduce it to just Pleasant Grove, then we can look at that and see what that reduction would be, and then we can make that decision on whether it still makes us get all of the improvements that we're anticipating through this area. Based on our calculations, there would be sufficient money in that to get widening improvements and safety improvements, so.
And you feel your staff is good to handle the additional 3.7 miles with the maintenance?
So, yeah, for what we're doing for the next 30 years, we are doing pothole repair, which would be very minor, I would expect, for the next 15 to 20 years. So yes, on that snowplow, we should be fine with that as well. And striping the crosswalks and signs, which we're agreeing to, we can handle that. We already do that, so.
I just wanna point out one thing. It was talked about, the Cedar Hills two weeks ago said, we'd love to sit down and talk with you as a council, maybe do this in January once we get a new county commissioner. talk with you as a council, maybe do this in January, once we get a new county commissioner. I mentioned that to Richard Nielsen. Now, Richard is the Public Works Director. He's the administrative guy. He's not the official decision-maker. But he said, so far, our discussions is if the cities try to push this off for another year, we're just, we're doing, we're going to design the mill and fill, and we're going to do it this summer. So in essence, what he was saying, again, this was not the county commissioners', if we try to prolong this and we don't come to a decision here somewhat soon, we're just going to do our mill and fill, and we're going to reject the grant money and be on our way. So, like I said, that's from the administrative guy, not from the elected officials.
Can I just say that also my feeling from what Richard Nielsen was saying was, I have to, he was saying, I have to get something done on this road now. It's bad, it's terrible, tons of complaints. And if things don't happen quick, that means the only thing he can do, if he gets a decision in February and March, is to do the mill and fill to handle something next year. Otherwise, he's off another full year before he can actually start a project of this type. So I think that's what he was saying, is that I, as a, I have to take care of that road now, rather than letting it go for another full year, because it's already falling apart as it stands today. So I think that's where he's getting his pressure to get that done, one way or the other, so.
And I do have a question.
Yeah.
You said something that there was a different standard for county and city?
Yes.
What is that?
Well, I mean, they don't do curb gutter on most of their roads. I mean, most of their roads are rural roads. And so that's, they don't, the storm drain, you know, it just falls off into the neighboring field. So our standards are curb gutter, sidewalk. Now, this project does not include any, I don't know, any sidewalk.
So, yeah, just curb and gutter, so...
Curb and gutter. And so, and that's...
So they are bringing it up from a standard, a county standard, to our city standard?
Yes, and that's...
Minus the sidewalk.
Yeah, so on certain areas where we don't have curb and gutter on 100 East, if we just do the mill and fill, we're not getting the curb and gutter. The grant money's going to cover that to make it the city standard, and just make it a lot workable for us. We also...
Is this state grant, or is this a county grant?
It's federal money administered through the county. Well, is it...
They changed that.
Okay.
Originally, it was federal. They came back, refunded it through the county. The county took the federal money and used that on other projects. So all of the money will be local money. It won't have to go through the federal process.
Thank you for clarifying.
Anyone else want to comment on this?
Well, I'm anxious to hear what you know out of your MAG meetings.
Okay, I'll share that as well. Did you want to?
Sure, I'll comment too. I've met with and visited with, I had Commissioner-elect, I guess, he wasn't Commissioner-elect at the time, but I had Commissioner-elect Ivy out to my law office to discuss this and a few other county issues. And I've had conversations with Bill Lee and with Greg Graves on this topic. And I've talked extensively with elected officials in Cedar Hills about their strategy and what their thinking was. And it's my opinion that we have strong reason to do what Cedar Hills did. I think that if we reject that deal, I think there's a strong likelihood, Cedar Hills is looking at it as a bluff to call. They think the money will be spent either way, that the MAG money, the full 9-point-whatever is going to be spent, and I'm inclined to agree, based on the conversations I've had. I think there's reason to believe that we could reject the financially bad deal for our city of taking ownership of this road in 30 years, and then having 50 years out after the PCI index has deteriorated below the 70, that ongoing permanent obligation, I think we can reject that deal. I think my inclination at this stage is to follow the lead of what Cedar Hills did and see that that money will likely, in my view, get spent anyway. But it is, it is something of an unknown, because the county commissioners have, and certainly the one that's being replaced this cycle, has been very adamant that they won't do that. We don't believe that that's the case.
So you think that they would not just do a mill and fill?
Right, I believe they'll spend the entirety of the money that's available from UDOT, the county money, and then the MAG money additionally to do the improvements that we were hoping that they would do. They do want to move immediately, they want to get something done, they would like us to take this ownership. It's a road that nobody wants, though. In the final analysis, it's a deteriorating asset, that's a long-term obligation that nobody really wants. And so they are using the leverage they have to force us to take it. We believe that they'll do the work anyway, because the new county commissioner that's coming in and one of the other county commissioners believe that the highest priority is to make sure those improvements happen, and residents in this county are safe on that road. So I think we're, I'm inclined to vote against this deal at this stage.
Yeah, I'll just say, I haven't had individual conversations with any of the county commissioners or with Commissioner Ivy. I just, the meetings that we've been in the last year leading up to this have been a little bit opposite to what's been represented. Again, these are, you know, we're sitting in with the county commissioners and we're talking about this. We have asked numerous times, please use the grant money, don't give us the road. We've been told no numerous times. So what Ben's representing is a little bit differently, but it's a different dynamic as far as that's concerned. I, you know, we haven't talked with Commissioner Ivy, other than the meetings, and all three of them have been with the same voice. I wouldn't say that, at least the meetings I sat in, they were all uniform in how they were reacting to that, so. I, you know, I don't know, that's, there is a, I don't have the crystal ball to know whether this is a bluff or all those things. All I know is what's been told to staff. I think Mayor, maybe you were in on a meeting or two of those?
Yeah.
And I'm not privy to the personal conversations, so.
So let me just share some other information. I do sit in on, I've sat in on several of those meetings over...
Year and a half, I don't know, it's been a while.
A longer period of time than before you were here. And, but, and my opinion has moved closer and closer to adopting this. In fact, I would have come tonight recommending moving forward with this, but I had lunch yesterday with an individual that gave me reason to believe that we shouldn't just reject it out of hand or accept it immediately. There's an opportunity here that this could work to everyone's advantage. County, Pleasant Grove, Cedar Hills, if we were to maybe have a couple of more conversations and hang on for another two months. The reason being, when you look at the, and I don't know the difference between tip, dip, nip, whatever you call those things, but when you look at the plan for where MAG monies are to be used in the next upcoming year, there are very few projects located in the North County that are county-designated roads. This just happens to be one of them. Most, if not all, of the county roads that require work are going to be done in the south part of the county. One of the things that we've worked with the other mayors over a long period of time is this sense of working together to make sure that both North and South County are taking care of. We watch out for each other, we take turns, we make sure that all monies that are received through MAG don't just go in one direction. They move to different places. You do have that BRT project that seems to be the only thing UDOT's doing next year in our county. You've got an interchange being looked at on the border of Springville and Spanish Fork. You've got just a butt-load of money going down south. There are, the North County Boulevard project has not been closed out. And when it is closed out, there are some other funds that are not yet spent. And those monies are not yet allocated to anything. So what I'm hearing, this is just what I'm hearing, for what it's worth, is it is possible that after the first of the year, not only would this 9.3 that we're discussing be on the table, but there's a possibility for some additional funding to become available through the closing out of the project on North County Boulevard, which would further improve the quality of the job that was done to improve 100 East from here to the mouth of the canyon, and that ownership would not transfer between the county to the city. Now, this is totally new news. I haven't had a chance to sit and debrief with the staff on this. I apologize. We'll have to get together and chat about it. Again, it's, you have a bird in the hand, and you have two birds in the bush. And I think that's really where you're at tonight. You unfortunately have in front of you something that is 100%, well, it's more solid. If we were to execute this tonight, we could go back to the county and have this deal done by the end of the year, and a project would be kicked off first of the year, be done by the end of next summer. If we were to wait, we would be working with a new county commissioner, we would be working with two existing county commissioners, with the possibility of support from the rest of the county mayors and additional funding to help us, and not taking ownership of the road. So it's a little different than what Ben is proposing. This is not a let's-call-there-bluff move. This is more of a what's in the best long-term interest of the city and what is in our best interest.
Am I under...
I wonder if you bought that, Scott?
Well...
You've been biting at that microphone, so go ahead.
The, there's one point, let's see, 3.3, sorry, 1.5 millions of money coming from the county already stipulated in this, which was kind of leftover money from North County Boulevard. You're saying that there's more on top of the 1.5? Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, I know, there's, it's, I apologize. It's just, yesterday did not seem like the right day for us to sit down and have a conversation about this, given everything else we were dealing with.
So let's say we continue the item, what would be the next step?
I would go back and meet with the people that I've been meeting with, and then we would go and talk to some other people that are involved, likely our new county commissioner, our existing county commissioners. And then we would sit together, you know, parts of the council would come together, and we'd meet and discuss the likelihood of those things coming together. And if that were to turn out not to be the case, we could sense that early enough, we could still execute this, I think, before the end of the calendar year.
I mean, again, I don't know how the county's going to react, and really, this is the fund choices that city council's going to make. I mean, because there is definitely some long-term impacts as far as this is concerned. So at this point, it really is on the political level. Administratively, there's really nothing else for us to cover.
It is political, and the other thing is, is it's not going to affect probably anybody living in this room right now. It's 30 years from now, so we're making a decision here that...
I've got at least 50, 60 years left in me, man.
I'm just saying...
Who was planning on being right here?
I'm just saying, sometimes we make decisions that seem expedient when, when if we understood just a little more information, there, it might persuade us to make a different decision that actually does happen, and it would serve everyone's purpose long-term. And it's not going to take months to figure this out. It should be, either way, it should be handled by the end of the year.
So if, I mean, obviously, the council needs to have discussion. If the decision is to continue the item, I would suggest that we have a phone call in pretty quick. If we talk with Richard, their public works guy, and let him know that we're putting this off, he's going to have a reaction. And I would hope that we get to the county commissioners before he does.
Well, the phone call to the, has been placed, so...
Very good, we're already on our way.
We're just waiting for the response.
Okay.
Yesterday, just nobody really wanted to talk. I mean, come on. So that's just more information for you. At this point, I feel fairly confident with the information as it was presented to me, and I think, given the circumstances, we could give it two weeks or four weeks and still come out okay with this, even if we decided to move forward with this that's in front of us. But again, it's up to the council.
The other thing I would propose, when elected officials of Cedar Hills have reached out requesting a face-to-face with us or some kind of a joint session, work session, conference in some capacity, I think if we're going to take more time...
I've accepted that offer. I think the ball to organize that is in their court. I've already indicated to Mayor Gee that I'm willing to do that. I re-indicated that on Thursday when we met...
But it sounds like we should get the information that you're...
The information I'm talking about is not coming from Cedar Hills.
Right, it sounds like we should get that before we meet with Cedar Hills.
Either way, we need to know the answer to this information.
I mean, I'm okay with continuing, and I'll make the motion to do that if there is an urgency to get this done before the end of the year, because we don't have the money to reconstruct this road. And I would hate to lose that on that grant money, and then we're stuck with a million overlay when really we need the safety, you know, elements of the road and the other that we would not be able to do as a city, so.
So is that a motion? Motion to continue?
I'll make the motion to continue.
Wait, can, wait, can I just ask?
Discussion? So we have a motion by Sid, a second by Lynn, discussion?
By Diana.
I'm sorry. Whoever.
I?
Erroneous.
Um, I just have a, I just have a question about underneath that road, we have some Pleasant Grove utilities that are very, very old and aging. And I'm thinking, Marty, specifically water? Anything else?
Sure, but that's our biggest concern right now.
So do you have, do you have a cost at all about repairing that water line?
We have a concept. We haven't got the final cost estimate on it.
Ballpark, we're talking 8 million, 1, 500, 250?
One and a half million.
Marty, when we discussed this when Dagan was still with us, did we have any of that information? Do you remember?
As far as the water line replacement?
Yeah, because he's the one that put together the original, we were asked to put together the scope of work.
We did the grant. We're the ones that applied for the grant.
So in my previous role, I did all of that.
Right.
And we did not do anything with water line replacement. But since this time, in the last six months, we have, we've went in and identified what we think, what we think is going to be needed to replace, to make sure that we're not digging up that brand-new road. And we've identified those areas and the work we'd like to see done. We're still working on finalizing the number, but my recollection was, I think it was in the 1.5 million dollar range of needed improvements in this section. Mostly south of 1100 North is kind of the major portion of the work, so.
So how does that play into it? If we have, which is probably not in our projects list this year?
It's currently not in our projects.
We would have to make it part of our projects list. I mean, it would make, it would make sense that if you've got nine-plus million coming to do this particular job, you would do the underlying work at the same time. We would have to juggle things and make that a priority. That's Marty?
And...
That's correct. And we would definitely recommend that we do that.
So you can come up with a million and a half by next year?
No, we could come up with a million and a half by next year. January, to be specific.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion by Sid, a second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this item 2016, resolution 2016 dash zero four five is continued. Right now, it's indefinite, but Scott, let's see if we can't get this back on the agenda in sufficient time to act on it if we need to by the end of the year.
That'd be excellent.
And that's for the county to act on it as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 10C. This is to consider for adoption a resolution 2016 dash zero four six. Thanks for coming. Accepting an annexation petition to annex a 8,459-square-foot piece of property located at approximately 899 East, 1190 North, from Utah County into Pleasant Grove City.
Mayor and council, this is step one of a two-step process. If you'll remember, this individual came in and requested to be considered for annexation into the city. It's a very small piece of property that lies adjacent to an already-platted parcel that has a home, does it have a home on it already?
No.
He's going to put a home on it. We requested that he do an engineering study prior to considering the annexation petition. He has accomplished that. I believe that was, those results were presented to council a couple of weeks ago when I was not here. The council indicated a willingness to consider the annexation petition. That's why the resolution is on the agenda tonight. The resolution also sets the date for the public hearing, which is January 17, 2017, wherein an ordinance will be considered, a public hearing will be held, and final action will be taken on the annexation petition. There are a couple of things to note. The county has looked at the petition and... The county has looked at the petition and does suggest that we change, or the applicant change the title of the petition. The Anderson annexation has already been used twice. And so they would ask him to come up with a different name. And I think that's it.
Can that be done conditionally tonight?
Yes, I believe you can accept the petition and then by the time we get to the ordinance, we'll, we'll have a renaming on it.
Okay. All right, any questions for Tina? I think we covered this one a couple of weeks ago. Any further discussion? We all know what we're dealing with. Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, council, I'll make the motion that we adopt resolution 2016-046, accepting an annexation petition to annex a 8,459 square foot, .19 acre piece of property located approximately 899 East, 1190 North from Utah County into Pleasant Grove City, providing for effective date and with the condition that the, based upon the recommendation of the county, that the applicant change the name of the annexation request.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Ben and a second by Diana by voice Lynn.
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is St. John's property, is that coming under redevelopment agency?
It is.
So if it's okay, I'm going to request the council that we move item 17 up and take care of that now and then we can continue the rest of our agenda.
Yes.
You all right with that?
I'll make the motion-
Please?
I make the motion that we convene as the Pleasant Grove Redevelopment Agency.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now reconvened as the Pleasant Grove Redevelopment Agency. We're here to consider recommendations from Randy Sant, our, what do we call you, Randy? Our economic development advisor?
Economic extraordinaire.
Consultant? Okay. Our consultant.
Depends on how much you bring in, then we'll add that title.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to kind of walk you through this, this MOU. Want to begin by, first of all, thanking Daniel and St. John Property for them working with us and, and their consultant, David Byrd, who has been really good to work with. We've spent quite a bit of time together over the last month, talking through a bunch of numbers and everything else, and I really appreciate that. And I, and as always, I appreciate the staff and the mayor and, and helping us get through this. As you recall, we talked to you individually about, I think it was about a month ago, can't remember, maybe a few weeks ago, where we kind of went over some numbers with you. And at that time, we suggested a potential number for looking at for participation. Since then, a number of things have come to our attention. The first all is, one of the things we like to look at when we're looking at participating with tax increment, we, we want to know what it is that we need to participate on, usually-
Sorry, Randy, I might have just spaced it, but did you mention what project we're talking about?
I'm sorry, I did not. The Grove Tower project, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate that. So this is about the Grove Tower project. And one of the things we like to look at when we're going to look at participating in tax increment financing and we're going to provide taxpayer monies to assist a developer, we want to know what are the costs associated with the project? And as we were going through this, it came to our knowledge that there's probably, that well, the developers outlined about 8.3 million dollars of impediment cost, if you will, in relation to his project of going from a single-story building to a six-story tower building. As we reviewed those, I've identified about 4.7 million of those that I think would be applicable. That includes the fact that you've got a very high water table there that has to be dealt with. You've got soil conditions that a bearing weight of that large have to be dealt with. There were other things, there's a storm drain issue that, that has to be dealt with. That's not just part of his, but it's other property that surrounds in there. So with that in mind, I felt very comfortable and I feel very comfortable recommending to the redevelopment agency that our participation would, we would look at going to at least the total amount of the new increment that would be generated by this tower, which would be about, the total is about 1.8, and if we participate at 75%, that would take us from that $1 million number to 1,365,000. Have no problem with making that recommendation based upon the information I've seen and I've reviewed. We then sat down and were having a talk. The developer would like to have more. His number was around 1.7. That is the amount of increment at 75% that's generated from the entire project. That would include not only the, the tower, but that would include the retail that he's proposing to do. As we reviewed that number and as we looked at participation and as we looked at the project and as we met with a staff, with Daniel and his consultant on Monday, I feel that if he's willing to meet the conditions that are outlined in this memorandum, which include that, first of all, he will construct a six-story office building on the subject property. He's indicated that that would probably have close to an assessed value of 38.6 million. And if he will deliver as part of that, a name-recognized tenant that's not located in Utah County, this has to be somebody that has to come outside of the county, so we can't move it from one part of the county to the other, and that that tenant, it takes at least 33% of the building, which would be two floors. I feel comfortable that we could give him an additional $150,000 of the inline retail that we're projecting, which would bring a total participation for the Pleasant Grove portion only. Not talking about the other taxing entities, we're only talking about Pleasant Grove Cities of $1,527,000. Now that's $76,000 a year over 20 years. What that means at that number is it still would leave the city at the 25% number, it would still leave you approximately $628,000, and I'm including sales tax to this number, so you would get about 31,400 from the property tax and the retail would bring about another $60,000 a year. So you would have a $91,400 cash flow coming into you and you would be giving the redevelopment agency $76,000 of that tax increment to flow to the developer. So you, you can see there, and, and as we've looked at the numbers and we've looked at the cost of services that we always do when we put this together, what, what's going to be the cost of the police department, what's the cost of fire department, what's the other? We believe that number will adequately cover your cost of operation as a city. So you still don't lose anything by that as a community. So what we're recommending is that this MOU would be that we would, we would agree to rebate the, the amount of, of 75% of the increment that comes off of the Grove Tower and that we would also provide an additional 150,000 off of the retail. So the total cap incentive from Pleasant Grove City to the redevelopment agency that then would be passed on to the developer would be a million 527,000. Now that's not as much as the developer would like, it's higher than the number we talked about, but we feel very comfortable, that's a very reasonable number, but he has to deliver the things that we've outlined in the MOU. If he does not come in with a tenant, then he does not get that additional 150,000 of participation. And again, it's all subject on him building what he said he's going to be and him producing the increment that's there. If that doesn't come as in high, we've protected the agency because your participation is 75% of the increment up to a cap, not to exceed 1,521. So if the building came in higher, we benefit. If the building comes in lower, that's a risk the developer takes and we feel very comfortable with that number and would recommend that you would consider adopting this MOU. And again, why are we doing it as an MOU? Well, we still have things we have to do. We have to finish creating the project area. We can't officially give him an incentive until we've got, dot the i's and cross the t's. We've got to create a project area, we've got to do interlocals, but this gives the developer enough comfort that I believe he's willing to move forward with the project, knowing that he has a commitment from the redevelopment agency to offer that incentive, subject to him doing what we've outlined in the MOU. I'm happy to answer any specific questions you might have.
Randy, without the incentive, the entitlement for a single-story building is already there, what-
That, that would produce, the, the single-story building is 706,431.
Is that over 20 years?
That is over 20 years.
And the amount over 20 years with the six-story building?
Just the six-story building by itself is 1,815,440.
Sorry, one more time?
1,815,440.
So it looks like it's less than 50%?
Yes.
In, in real dollars?
That's correct.
So by giving up the increment for the 20 years up to the increment, we would be generating more than twice the revenue?
That is correct, you would be.
Okay.
And, and, and that doesn't even take into effect the potential sales tax that would be there.
Which we have.
And, and I really believe that, again, in my experience has been, that you build a larger building, you build a Class A office building, that has a potential of bringing in a higher quality of a retail tenant, which means potentially more sales tax dollars for the community. I think the other reason why it makes sense to do this is simply by the fact that you're setting, if you will, a vision or precedent of what that corridor is going to look like. Every day I come down here, I pass Lehigh and I, I look at Lehigh and I think of this corridor being very similar to something like you see right off of there. So I think it makes sense to move forward with it, to offer a little bit more than we've got. The justification is there. I believe we're participating on some significant impediments, which wouldn't be there if he was doing the single-family and, and that would be my recommendation to you, that we would then proceed to prepare agreements with the city, with an interlocal agreement, that that would set the cap for you, for your participation, and that we would then move forward to create the project area.
Okay, so just rough math here, because I'm not the mathematician. This is an additional 108,000 of net income to the city?
Yes, very close to that.
All right.
And 1,000 people a day.
Or more.
In-
Or more.
Occupancy, is that what you're looking at?
Daytime population in that building would be 1,000 people a day.
It could even be more.
All right, I'm going to go with the or more.
Yeah.
Thanks, Randy.
Sense of urgency, there was a timing component to this and can you relate that to us?
The developer wants to get going ASAP. There's a tenant out there that they are working with, that they would like to get under a letter of intent. And I believe the developer, and I'll let Daniel maybe address that if that's okay, Mr. Chairman, but I believe the intent was to move very quickly so that those two things could come together within the next 30 days.
All right. Council, do we, do we have any questions for Randy?
Randy, I've got one, if you can speak to it, and I don't know, there may be information you can't share, but can you relay anything that's public information about the conversations that have been had with other governmental entities like school boards or county?
I'll, I'll refer that over to Scott because Scott's taken the lead on, on, on talking with those other taxing entities.
Okay.
We have had initial discussions with the county. On a discussion basis, they are supportive of the project, but we have not tied them down to a specific number yet. The school district, we have a, a meeting with their facilities committee next week. The facilities committee with the school is the one who recommends to the school board on whether this project is worthy of tax increment or not. The school district would like to have a decision by December 13th. We're, we're hoping to have the county have a decision by early December as well, so. So far, two good discussions with both the entities. There are, there's two water districts that are involved with that. Generally, if you get the other three groups on board, that they'll follow suit, so we're, we're focusing our attention on those three right now.
So Ben, for just two points on that, I was in that meeting, but the two points are, my understanding and my recollection, you'll, you'll correct us when you speak, but that our participation is independent from what the other taxing entities would, what their obligations are, whatever they're going to decide. Certainly, we would, you know, participate in advocating, we would go and help because it's, it's in our interest. I mean, we stand to gain from this. It was interesting to me in the many years that working with Alpine School District, this particular discussion seemed to be a list of questions, as if we were checking off a list. And when we got to the bottom of that list, we were scheduled for a meeting. So it was quite different than other discussions that we've had in the past. This one seemed to be more moving right along, kind of.
Mayor, you typically, Scott, I mean, you typically don't get into that word yourself, right? Isn't someone else, doesn't the school board represent?
Yeah, in the past, we've asked to be part, to represent the project in the facilities committee meeting and we've been told no. So this is a change for them. I think it's a good change for the school district, that those are the ones that are representing the project are able to be present. So that's a huge positive for us. We, we only have a few minutes, but we'll have the people in the room for the Q and A. But that's also necessary in order to meet that December 13th school board meeting.
We're trying not to read too much into it, although I just did, right?
It's the criteria.
What we're trying to say is that, I, I think Rob looked at it and he said, you know, if this is going to happen, we probably need to cut to the chase and get into the meat of it in front of the people that can make the decision before it goes before the, the board. And he wanted to expedite that part of the process, so whether it means anything, we can't say. Any, any other questions for Randy?
Thank you.
Can we, Daniel, can we invite you to address the council if you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, thanks to Randy. Man, a lot of this stuff goes right over my head that, that Randy does and you guys have been great, so a lot of, lot of discussion. Any questions for me?
Well, no comment, I mean, this is in response to a request one year ago last week that Daniel made to this body for a one-story office building and he took it to heart and went back and came up with a solution. So the ball's in our court. This is a response to our request. Any questions for Daniel?
I am excited about the retail part of it, so.
Me too. Brandon did some math, 1,300 people.
1,300.
Brandon?
Actually, yeah, Brandon, can you just come up and?
So the, the thing about this, it would, it would act as a bit of a catalyst because it would be the single largest office building in Utah County outside of the eight-story Novell Tower down in Provo, I mean, at 200,000 square feet. And to Daniel's credit, I tried to push him to kind of reduce the size of the floor plate, remember that? And Daniel, and just said, I, he wanted to maximize it, he wanted to create something that was unique. I mean, it's, the floor plate, when he says, when you talk about a tenant with two floors, that's a 32,500 square foot floor plate. By way of comparison, just, just looking at the landscape of North Utah County, if any of you are familiar with the new Vivint Solar Headquarters, that building is 150,000 square feet.
Total?
Total, with a much smaller footprint. So if you look at how prominent the Vivint Solar Headquarters is south of the Megaplex Theaters in Lehigh and add 50,000 square feet and another floor, and you put it at the Pleasant Grove Interchange, you can imagine the impact that it would have. And our biggest challenge as a community has been critical mass. How do you draw retailers? How do you draw other activity without having critical mass? Because our demographic doesn't, doesn't draw the retail by itself. Our community's demographic alone doesn't do it. And so you have to, you have to give these people courage and they have to feel like there's enough significant momentum that the retail follows in order to service the captive audience of tenancy that comes into play. It's the same thing you saw up in North County in Lehigh. You've seen it similarly in South Jordan. Once you get a critical mass in place of, of office, the retail and other service amenities I could cite numerous examples, but I remember at River Park in South Jordan, I don't know if any of you are familiar with that project. It's a 1.7 million square foot project that- that the Salt Lake Tribune and everyone else said was a flawed project that would never see the light of day, because it was west of I-15 in South Jordan, in the river bottoms. And they said, no, this is more appropriately placed in Sandy on I-15. Well, it was interesting, once we got a critical mass of office in that location, Lifetime Fitness ends up establishing their first site, and only site in Utah, the largest fitness facility. And that gave Market Street, the gastronomy restaurant group, the courage to pull the trigger. And then the rest
Nami?
Gastronomy.
Tsunami?
Yeah, Tsunami, yeah, Market Street, Tsunami, and others. The Hilton Home to Sweets, everything else that ended up filling that up, so.
So these are all commitments, you guys are registering this, right?
I'm just saying. I just wanna give context.
In favor?
I just wanna give context, and that's something we've been missing, is that just the critical mass, we've had a number of different discussions on that. And again, another comparison, so it's 50,000 square feet bigger than the Vivint Solar Headquarters. It's also equal to the combined size of the new ancestry.com campus up in Lehigh, which is two buildings. So we're putting in one prominent tower that'll be an iconic landmark. I mean, as people fly across Utah County or over the county, it'll be one of those landmarks that actually will pop out and actually create some real placemaking. Anyways, that's all.
I've got a question, so what's your feeling on cities offering these incentives?
It's unfortunately essential. I mean, you look in Lehigh, I mean, there's an EDA in place on that side of the freeway. I mean, every project, whether it be, I mean, even Sandy City with their Hale Center Theater projects, I mean, they've got an 11-story building master planned adjacent to Hale on I-15 planned. And without having the RDA's assistance in order to create the highest and best use and the optimal impact for the city, and really the base in that area, it wouldn't be happening. There's no way that Gardner Company or that Hale Theater or anything else would be actually seeing the light of day. It'd be just another ho-hum commercial project instead of what will be watched, it'll be another, it will turn heads in the next few months. Everyone will say, wow, I mean, it will redefine the landscape of South Valley in the same way that I believe this project, this building will set the tone for the gateway into Pleasant Grove.
So if we build it, they will come?
Yep, that's what happens typically. You just look at history, that's the only way you can gauge, you know, the best indication of how to, you know, what will happen in the future is what has historically happened, what are the comparables? And I see nothing, I can't cite anything that would be contrary.
Okay, any other questions for Brandon?
Thank you.
For Daniel?
I got a question for Daniel. You know how much I love you, right? And where I stand on some of these issues. Here's a quiz question for you. According to Ed St. John, what are four things that your work and your investment do for a community?
Oh, man. That sounds familiar. We provide places for businesses to operate, generate profits, employ people, and pay taxes.
Okay, I'm thinking about that last one.
Yep.
So, thanks.
Okay, so we have a proposal in front of us to enter into a memorandum of understanding. Tina, you've written this?
Yes, before you take action, I just need to point out one thing. The agreement that's in your packet was slightly modified about 3 o'clock this afternoon, and I don't think it made it into your packet, so I just want you to
What about this one?
I don't, yeah.
I have the current one?
Okay, so there's just one slight change in section 2.013, and the retail. The old language said that the developer will construct the projected 51,500 square feet of inline retail and retail paths concurrently with the Grove Tower project. We removed the reference to the actual square feet and simply said that the developer will construct the projected inline retail and retail paths as currently shown on their approved site plan concurrently with the Grove Tower project in order to maximize the potential incentive. I just wanted to make sure you knew that the square footage was taken out, and it's just as approved on the site plan, okay?
All right, so we have in front of us a memorandum of understanding with the modification, as Tina has outlined. We're talking about incentivizing the St. John Properties Company for the development of the six-story tower. We're looking at a net gain over and above what we would have received of $108,000 approximately over 20 years. It's setting a tone for the gateway entrance to the city. There would be an immediate one-third occupancy of the facility. And we're looking at also the gain of the retail generated. And Randy, our consultant, our esteemed, is that what we said? Our esteemed consultant is recommending that we move forward with this. So if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make some discussion, just a couple of quick comments. I think this is a promising project. I think there's reason to believe that a lot of the work and a lot of things that might come would come anyway. I'm not opposed to entertaining incentives and increments. I think it's tremendous work. I applaud our developer for making the request. It makes perfect sense to make the request. I was willing to entertain the first number we talked about. One of the concerns that I have is the inclusion of retail, there was additional inline retail plots in the increment. That's a concern for me. I also believe, and Scott and I, we've talked about this, what was the increment incentive that was provided to DoTERRA?
About 1.2 million, from the city, the city participation.
So if the city participation in DoTERRA was 1.2 million, I have a hesitation about doing a larger increment for this project. And so for those reasons, I'm disinclined to be a vote in favor of this project. And I think the rest of the councils should know and understand that. We just asked our public to give a seven-figure sum because we didn't have money. I'm not sure I'm ready to give another seven-figure sum and turn to another entity, so.
So you do understand that you would not be getting that if you don't do this? This is a net gain?
I'm not sure, I'm convinced that that's the case. I believe that this project could very well come anyway. There's a lot of reasons for this project to come.
All right.
I was willing to entertain a different number, but I'm not personally willing to entertain the larger number.
Understood.
Can we hear from Daniel? Can you kind of explain what, if we turn down the proposal, what's the, is the project coming? What's happening if we decline tonight?
So I have a lot of respect for Ben, and he and I, I know where he is, and we're okay with that. And I think he knows this, there's no bluff. Anybody who's been involved in any of these conversations for the last two weeks, I think understands what's driving this even tonight. And it's in your hands. And I respect Ben, we've talked about this, and I can respect that.
And I have no issues with a person's opinion. I don't think that should affect, I mean, I just, let's move forward with whatever you want to do. Is there any further discussion?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Is that what we're looking for? And I'll make this because, with the adjective, I'm overwhelmed. I'm excited. I think this is sending a message, and I think Pleasant Grove is open for business. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution 2016-04 RDA authorizing the RDA chair to enter into a memorandum of understanding with St. John Properties regarding the Grove Tower incentive.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Diana and a second by Eric. For a moment, I thought it was you, Ben.
No.
My hearing is getting really bad. Okay, we'll take this by voice. Ben?
No, but thrilled to have it coming.
Understood. Eric?
Oh, yes.
Sid? Should I write adjectives along with the descriptions?
All the commentary, all the editorial.
Okay, that was a yes. Sid?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
And Diana?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries four to one. Expressions of concern have been noted. Thank you very much. Pleasant Grove is open for business, and I think we've answered your question rather quickly this evening. So appreciate that. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to exit the redevelopment agency and reconvene as the city council.
And make the motion that we exit as the redevelopment agency and enter back into city council meeting?
Motion by Sid, second by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now on review and discussion on the November 15th, 2016 city council meeting agenda. I think that's the salmon.
Yes.
Salmon color. We have a public hearing, this is a continued public hearing, item 9A to consider for adoption, ordinance 2016-25. To vacate, you know, I like the way we did this last time. Didn't you kind of breeze through all of your items? Without having to read through all of these? Why don't you go ahead? We're gonna cover 9A through C.
That first one, A, is not mine, I think, was that yours, Marty? Or who's addressing that one? Sorry, I don't know.
I'm sorry, this is Scott.
This is the, this is the
To vacate the utility easement on Lot 1, Parcel C in the Grove Industrial Park subdivision, is that you?
I can help you with that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
It's the, it's a request by a new, a potential new property owner who's buying some property in the old Pleasant Grove Industrial Park area just across the railroad tracks. And we, when the plat was recorded, the city actually owned a lot of property in there, and we had recorded some public utility easements in that. As it turned out, we never needed to use them. The new owner would like to make sure that they take title free and clear of any encumbrances that aren't necessary, so they've asked us to vacate that easement, that's all we're doing.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions for Tina? Okay, let's go ahead then, and Ken, let's have you cover 9B and C.
Okay, so we have a rezon and a couple of plats for property on 100 East, excuse me, at 2150 North, 100 East, 33.5 acres. So they are looking for a rezon from RR to R120, which is permitted by the general plan. Sorry, wrong way. So it's this acreage, there's actually two pieces that are being proposed at this time. So we've got Plat A on the southern portion and Plat B on the, a portion of the northern portion, as I will show in just a minute. Okay, and it shows the zoning there again. It's currently in the RR zone. In that area to the west is R120 zone, and that whole area below 2,600 South is permitted to go to the R120. So that is their request, and well, that would be it at this point.
Any questions for Ken? No surprises there, okay. 9C?
So, let's see, I think C is
It's ordinance 2016-27, amending the city code.
Right, so it, we're kind of hopping over here. Maybe we could rearrange the order a little bit.
For next week?
Yeah, for next week, so that we deal with the rezon and plat, and then we can go into this one. But anyway, that's how it's listed now. So use number 6377 is indoor climate-controlled storage. And Rob Taylor, who runs the Shamrock Auto currently on North County Boulevard, is asking that we also allow on his property, including his new property that he's purchased, that narrow strip behind him. I'll show on the map here. So he's got the Shamrock Auto just fronting right on North County Boulevard, right here. He's also now purchased this additional piece behind him, and he would like to make, take full advantage of developing the combined property. And so he would like to be able to do some indoor climate-controlled storage back behind there. That is not currently permitted in this zone. But we have looked at this property earlier as being a little bit different because it is long and narrow. It is on the west side of North County Boulevard. We're budding right up to American Fork. There's not a lot of other opportunities for different types of development, especially now that Shamrock has come in and done what they've done. It's a very limited opportunity on that narrow strip of land. So he would like to add in behind what he's doing on the front edge with his car sales, some indoor climate-controlled, two-story indoor storage facility.
Lot zone, or are we just looking to add?
So currently what we did, and it may be looked at as spot zoning, but what we did to allow him to do in this area, as highlighted in red, is to do the used car sales. And we did that not by creating a new zone or an overlay, but we did it by verbiage or text in the ordinance, which is what he's asking that we do again. So the text is, after the first line, "Facilities to be permitted only within the area west of North County Boulevard, between State Street and Center Street, as shown on the map attached to the ordinance" codified herein. So that way, we haven't created a new zone, haven't created a new overlay, we're just putting in restrictive language as to where this use can be permitted.
So we're adding this land use and limiting where it can be applied?
Right.
Okay.
And this type of zoning method is also, you're going to see it coming forward again soon. Steve Toll, who has the property on the corner of 600 West and Center Street, just got that auto repair shop and wants to do auto sales, as he's come in and talked to the council previously, is now requesting this type of thing where we will just limit a use in a certain area. And what we're looking at is just that strip in the downtown village zone that fronts on 600 West. So it'd be a block's worth of property, just those properties that front on 6 West. So that's something you'll see. So it's just another tool, another way to restrict uses without having to create new zoning or whatever.
Any questions?
Yeah, where would they have access to that property, by the way?
On this one?
Yeah.
So what he's proposing, oh, keep going the wrong way. That he'll, he's got a new site plan and a new plat, so he'll eliminate these lines between. And then he'll have a smaller commercial, probably an office building just right on the northern end. And he's looking at creating a new lot on the south end, which you've got Center Street here, that will extend into American Fork, actually currently does. So he has a corner lot there, and he would like to make a commercial retail pad out of that and sell it. So then back behind in the center area of his properties where he'd like to do the storage facility.
What is that, what is on the strip there on the American Fork side?
You've got the residential homes there, they've got like cottage homes. You've got the senior assisted living up here, and then the other residential down behind.
But there's nothing in that lot between those homes and then this property?
There's currently vacancy there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ken. Let's go ahead and move to section 10, action items ready for vote.
Okay, so now we're at the plat for Savage Estates, which is what the rezon is setting up for. So it's a 33-lot subdivision, actually in two phases, Plats A and Plat B. Again, the same area that we were talking about earlier. So the first one on the southern end has 12 lots. So you have a roadway that is connecting to the street across here, and then coming through here, creating a cul-de-sac, but will also have future extension through the center property, which is not being included in the development right now, but for which we have a vicinity plan so that a similar-type neighborhood can be, in the future, developed on that property.
Is this all owned by the same person or group?
Well, yes, it's now being owned by these two properties, except for, I probably should have, let's go back to this. So these two properties, Blake Jumper and Associates have purchased these properties, and
What's in the middle?
It's separate ownership. But these people are not asking for the rezon, nor are they developing their property. But Blake Jumper and Associates have created a vicinity plan that ties the three together. And then the northern piece on this map, north is on the And then the, the northern piece on this map, north is on the left-hand side of the, or excuse me, yeah, the left-hand side. I'm all mixed up with politics on left and right right now, so, sorry. So, this is, this will be a plat B, and then there will be a future phase two that will do with the northern properties.
Ken, can I say, Ms. Marty?
Marty?
Can I just say one thing? Just, so, we had been working with a developer. This home right here, actually, next week you will see included in that plat. That makes it the thirty-third lot there. It's an existing home on First East. We'd requested that the access be off of this new road, and he's now working with the developer. They've adjusted a boundary line to be able to accommodate that lot in the plat. So, just be aware that you're gonna see it just a little bit different. That will be in the plat next week when you review this. Also be aware, there's a hundred-foot easement that runs through this remainder parcel that's gonna be left there. When they come back with phase two, it's gonna be a little bit fun dealing with that. We've got the Murdoch Canal Pipeline, that ten-foot diameter pipeline. I think we've got a forty-eight inch diameter pipeline and another thirty-six inch diameter pipeline, all right there. So, the next phase is gonna be a little bit interesting, but everything for this phase works, so.
On the master, on the master transportation plan, is it the two seventy-five east that goes all the way through? And...
So...
Or is that a...
So, thirty east ends as far as Collector Street at eighteen hundred north, which is on the other, yeah. So, it's just barely below, right here. So, two seventy-five east changes just before it gets, right, right at eighteen hundred north, which is right here. And then it comes up and continues through, so it'll be...
That is the north-south street?
The interior north-south, other than one hundred?
Yes.
Any other questions? Hey, Ken? Lorraine's Place?
So, Lorraine's Place has been before, a couple times before. It was initially approved in two thousand fourteen, and then it was, it received an extended approval in last year, and for various reasons, they haven't had it recorded, and it's gone several months now, so it is considered to be an expired plat. So, we're just bringing it back forward. There's no real changes to this, so it's just off of three hundred north, about five fifty east. And it's a flag lot subdivision, very simple. Nothing has changed from previous approval, so just going through the semantics of getting it re-approved.
Are they planning on acting soon?
Yes, she has a purchaser of lot two, so that's, I think, what she was holding on before.
Sure. And then ten C is a resolution, two thousand sixteen zero four seven, to authorize the mayor to declare a loader as surplus.
So, every year, we, we have a one-year lease with our John Deere loader, and we purchase it, and then we sell it back at the end of the year, so this is the time that we're doing that. There's actually a new state contract to be aware of, so previously it was with Hanan Equipment, John Deere. Now, it's going to be with Wheeler Cat. And so, as we look into the future and replacing that loader, we likely will be getting one from Wheeler Cat in the next, as we, as we replace that for the next year.
Are we only doing that with our larger equipment? Are we doing that with vehicles?
Uh, not. We're, we're doing a little testing with vehicles, so we've got a couple years. We're gonna go two to three years and look at replacing those and seeing if we can keep the value high. And so, we have very little cost in doing that. This is very similar with our loader. Right now, for example, our contract is, we purchased it at a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. We will sell it back. We have a contract to sell it back in December for a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So, we actually make, we use it for a year and, and make a little money. So, it's, it's not a bad deal. Well, right, it's a brand-new vehicle, so makes sense.
PD, fire, any takers on that?
If you guys wanna drive loaders around, large track hoes.
I'm, I'm just wondering if that isn't... A new way to go, yeah. I like it. That's great.
So, it's looking even better for the next year's loader. We may even make a little bit more back on that, so.
Okay. All right, no other business then for next week? Coming back to this week, neighborhood and staff business, Libby? Didn't we just do that one this last year? So, you need another chair? Okay, can we advertise that on our volunteer website? Who takes care of that? David, would you do that? Okay. And then, who all lives in Monkey Town? That was Mark, wasn't it? We don't have anybody else. Okay. Oh, Lynn, you're over there, sorry. Can you advertise in your area to see if there's anybody that would be interested?
Sure, I'll go outdoor to door.
There you go, drag somebody in. Make sure the last name's Walker, huh?
Sure.
Thank you. Anything else for ya? Okay, Libby, thanks. Ken?
Okay, on your rap sheet that you have in front of you, the number one on the purchase quick quack car wash, just wanted to bring your attention up to what's being proposed there. We have received a site plan for that.
Hey, Ken, sorry.
Okay, can you hear me now?
You. Yeah, she can work for Verizon.
So, Quick Quack Car Wash is proposing to remove the buildings where State Street Grill and Fong's and the former ice cream shop, so that they can redevelop that whole corner into a car wash. So, being a little bit concerned on our end here that we would be losing two restaurants in Pleasant Grove, which is something that we prize dearly. I have worked with, or communicated at least, with the owners of both of those businesses and tried to tie them in with those who have opportunities in downtown Pleasant Grove for relocation possibility. So, I don't know what may come of that, but we just kind of felt like, especially when they came forward in DRC proposing that, it's like, okay, well, that's great that you wanna develop here, but what, what about those there? So, so we're hoping that something will happen there.
Great. Anything else for ya? Okay, and you've got the Utah State University when?
Oh, yes, so we do have a meeting with them this Thursday.
Thursday.
So, they will be here with their students and reviewing what opportunities exist for them to help us. We're gonna do a tour through downtown. They'll be here around three o'clock, then they're going to come at six-thirty and meet with the planning commission and talk about how the planning commission can be involved with their planning.
And what...
So, we, we would invite you to be involved in any of that as well.
What's the goal of this, of the SU? Is it SU, USU students?
Yeah, so it's through their extension services, so they have this program that they can assist communities. And so, we will focus their efforts in helping us move forward with a, a new downtown master plan.
Great. David?
Tomorrow is the annual tri-chamber business summit that Dotaro will be hosting for the three different chambers of commerce, Lehigh Area, American Fork Area, and the Pleasant Grove Linden Chamber. There will be four speakers. Maria Shaleos is one of them, Randy Garn, co-founder of Hero Partners, Charlie Smith, the managing partner at Milestone Management Partners, as well as Brandon Fugel, who we heard from tonight. And it's a great opportunity for business owners to come and connect with each other, as well as receive some great training and opportunity there that, that happens once a year where these three chambers join together and make that a great event. So, if you weren't aware of that, now you are.
Thank you. Dion?
Nothing.
Marty?
I just, construction projects going well. We've, we're finished with the Garden Drive project, looks great over there. Four thousand north is planned to be paved on Tuesday, so we'll be finishing up that project. They're just working on grading that out now, so. Tons of stuff going on with projects over the winter, and a lot planned for the spring. So, you'll see a lot of, a lot of things coming forward in the near couple of months.
Wonderful, thank you. Dave?
Sure, I've seen a little bit of emails, kind of going around a little bit about the, about the election, specifically about the bond.
Okay, can't really hear you, sorry.
I've seen some emails going around, can you hear me now?
I guess I have the wrong carrier, 'cause you can't hear me now, okay. So, I've seen some emails going around just a little bit about the bond, and I haven't really replied to any. But what I want to do is, is take the opportunity to, to really thank the mayor and the council and the supporting committee members that were able to really put this together. I think sometimes, there is that possibility that sometimes the community forgets that this is their fire department. They voted for their facility so that the services that we provide could be provided to those citizens that are in need, you know, into the future. And, you know, I'm honored to be part of it, but more than anything else, I just wanna tell them, thank you, and really everyone involved, thank you for really stepping up and making this a reality, because I think it really brings a lot to the community, and it's been a long time coming. We've built one fire station in this city in its, well, I think in its entirety, and it sits at, across the street in that little teeny shed. Other than that, we've rebuilt and made do every time. And so, I'm glad that in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we can step up and, and do it right this time. So, to those that were involved, thank you.
Dave, Mike?
I don't wanna jinx it, so I have nothing.
Oh. But it's a different mic. Sherry?
Just a reminder of Veterans Day program. We have an excellent speaker planned, actually two. And Ben's wife is going to be playing a musical number, so it'll be a nice program. And which of you will be there? Okay, now I know who I can ask to pray. So, no, but Friday, eleven AM at the cemetery, thanks.
Thanks. Denise? Nothing. Scott?
Just a couple of things. We need to canvass the election. Kathy and I have been sharing emails. We were not scheduled to have a meeting on November twenty-second, but we will need to canvass the bond vote, so.
And I understood that that was only going to be to canvass the vote.
Yes.
Is that right?
That's where I'm at.
So, we're not gonna add anything to that agenda?
No.
That's a commitment.
Yes.
Thank you. That is the week of Thanksgiving?
Yes, it's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
So, we're not gonna add anything to that agenda? Just making sure, thank you.
We, in fact, we would like to move the meeting up to five o'clock, if that would be okay, for staff purposes.
I'm, I'm okay with that. How's the rest of the council?
How about noon?
We, we, I, I propose that same thing, but we're not gonna get the results from the county till three o'clock.
Three fifteen?
Well, hate for us to convene, and they end up giving it to us an hour late. So, we're saying five, and then hopefully it's ten minutes, and we're done.
Sounds good.
Also, with the, the bond being passed, I wanna get some feedback from the council on proceeding and, and how, not necessarily how quickly we wanna go, but as I've looked at the process, there's two things. One is beginning the design process, and the other is the financial side of actually borrowing the money. I'm meeting with our financial consultant on Monday. He's gonna give me a timeline on how long it will take for us to borrow the money, and then we just decide when we wanna pull the trigger to start that process.
Could we have an agenda item on a work session for the council to discuss maybe, I don't know what you call them, milestones, if you will, on, on things that, that we need to be thinking about that go into this whole process? And if possible, have someone who has gone through this, maybe help us a little bit so that we can kind of look at a calendar and, and, and go forward from there? I don't know, how many of you feel? You guys okay with that?
Be really valuable. In fact, one of the comments I've gotten a lot from the public is requests for kind of a sense of the order of things. Do we engage the architect first? Do we spend money we currently have? And then decide at what point do we get donations? At what point do we draw down the bond? At what point do we do each of the different possible pieces? And so, yeah, having kind of a thumbnail sketch of a schedule would be really valuable.
I'm thinking that with the assistance of someone that's done it. The other part I was thinking is, there are people in our community that have career experience at being owners reps. They represent owners in the, the whole project. And if we could latch on to one of these, either, either as a volunteer or as a, as a hired person to watch after the city's interests, you know, the citizens' interests financially, to advise us on that, that might be, that might be money well spent, I think, so.
Well, one of the memes or themes I've seen online too, and I've had some calls and questions about, is this idea of continuing the committee. And I don't know that we wanna continue the same committee, but there might be others that would be willing, or there may be some on that committee that would be willing to continue to fill a role like that on a volunteer basis.
Yeah, so if we could put that on our schedule and, and maybe give us a break, and then let's get together and discuss that.
We'll have it by November twenty-second, is that a good day for you?
Uh, no, I don't think that's... I think that's not a good idea.
Uh, no, we'll, I'll have the timeline on the...
You did want Christmas off, right?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll change that.
Thank you.
No, we'll have the financial timelines by Monday, and then I'll probably just call Scott Wilkinson, who has helped us through the process so far, and have him give me a process on the building side of things. We'll bring that all back to you and kind of talk through, here's, here's the benchmarks, here's the timelines, those types of things. Because really, the benchmarks become real once we actually hire an architect and, and we're into design phase. But I think Scott can give us a nice little snapshot, so we'll, we'll work to get that. And then, I mean, we might be able to have it by next Tuesday, and then we can put that on the agenda item and have that discussion.
Thank you.
Yes, I...
Anything else?
No, that's it.
I didn't think so. Tina?
Uh, no.
Thank you very much. Kathy? Diana?
On that same topic, I think it would be, well, first of all, to Ben's comment about the committee, I've just, and I've been thinking about this.
I don't know why.
I have been thinking about this. I think there, I would love some kind of a, so on the committee conversation, get my thoughts straight. This is a different skill set than, I know that there are some members that want desperately to still be involved. I do see, think that it would be advantageous for us at some level to have a financial oversight or maybe a weekly declaration or some kind of a, some process where we are kept up to date on it. I think it's gonna get very involved with, whether it's an owner's rep or a project coordinator. I thought for sure we could get Marty to, to do it.
He does everything, doesn't he?
He just buys and sells equipment every year.
A loader.
Once you've worn more than one hat, you can, you can wear any number.
Anyway, I do know the, the process is, is, so I think what, what I'm asking is that I would like to be as involved as possible. I don't know what that looks like, other than I think it would be important for us to have some kind of a weekly update. This is what's happening, this is how, what decisions have been made, or, you know, but keep us involved, anyway.
That's a good idea. Anything else for ya?
Yeah, one more thing. I'm feeling very grateful. This has been a long process. I know for some people, it's, it's been even longer than I've been here. I'm just very, very grateful that, you know, and our job is, you know, we're board members. We're managing our, our funds. And I'm just grateful that the need was expressed, the people saw the need, and, and voted for it. I'm, I'm very grateful for every second that everyone has put in to this voluntarily, and, anyway.
Lynn? Good? Sid?
I'm just really proud of Pleasant Grove for the decision that they made.
Sorry, can't hear you.
I'm just very proud.
I know that's unusual, but... I know that's unusual, but...
Um, a Pleasant Grove for the decision that was made last night, the majority of voters, um, we all kind of came together, and I, like Dennis said, I've been involved since day one with this, and it's been very long, and I wasn't expecting to be involved when I ran for city council, um, but it's part of my job and what I signed up to do when I was elected, and, but I'm just really proud of our community, so, thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
I'd probably echo Chief Thomas's, uh, remarks he made over there. Wonderful process, great to see the community involved, those who advocated for, for this and got out and, and got the word out, proud of them. Um, just overall, just proud of, of how we handled it this time, so, and I'm getting close, it's feeling itchy, but I'm, I'm, I'm holding true for the police, so.
Okay.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Ben?
Uh, just an invitation to everyone, uh, especially, I'm looking at you, Lynn, uh, a few weeks ago, maybe a month or two ago, we had, uh, Ms. Utah coming to the Rotary Club, and she lost her voice, and she's coming tomorrow to make up for that, so, anybody that's available, but anyone that's interested in coming to Chubby's Rotary Club. Dave, when was the summit tomorrow? What are the hours?
It starts at nine and goes to one.
Okay, so that may be a conflict for people to do both, but if you're free for lunch and you're interested, come by Chubby's tomorrow. Be great.
Okay. Um, about three o'clock in the morning last night, uh, I was surprised because they Fox stopped chatting and saying, "We can't say anything," and finally got up and Trump got up and accepted the, the nomination, or the election, and Hillary called him and, and said, "Congratulations." I was impressed with his speech, I was impressed with Hillary's speech this morning, the concili- reconciliation, conciliation, whatever you wanna call it, I didn't, I didn't sense any sarcasm tones in anyone's voices, it's the first time I saw Trump act presidential. I mean, let's, let's face it, this has been, uh, this has been one hell of a ride, but I felt peace, and I haven't felt peace in a long time. And I just wanna say thank you to this city, everyone, for supporting, for supporting this process, for supporting our public safety people, for supporting each other, and for defending the Constitution. I really, really value that document. So thank you. Okay, we've already signed our plats, I don't think there's anything else I wanna talk about on the calendar, so motion to adjourn.
Make the motion? Oh, I'll second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
[laughing] Which one? [inaudible].